Chairman, we're live.
All right, welcome back to our morning session of our special meeting on September 11th. Next action item is discussion and decision regarding the Epstein Bridge bids. Gosh, this has been a interesting time on this one. So, a lot of the considerations from my understanding is the legalities of this bid. And whether the addendum number two was left off because it was not acknowledged from our lowest bidder. And then also the timing involved in all of this because if we don't, if we don't give this bid now and move forward, we will lose the EDA funding and this bridge will not occur.
There's a possibility we would have to pay back the EDA for what we've already, what they've already paid for it. Correct me on any of this, Cody, if I'm, if I'm wrong.
I think you're correct on the possibility, Jeff, and the only statement I would say is it's not that we absolutely could not move forward. That has yet to been defined, but the, it's likely the project would have to extend. And that's not a guarantee that EDA would allow a project extension, so.
Commissioner Caldwell, before we go on, do you need to abstain from this one?
Yes, please let the minutes show that I'm re-accusing myself.
Okay. So with that knowledge, I think that with legal counsel's interpretation of the law and what is happening, we need to go reject the lowest bidder and go with the next highest.
That's, that's the way I understand it, but like I've said before, if we go to the next lowest bidder, we've got to check with the, once again, Cody, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to go back because we only budgeted a, EDA only budgeted a certain dollar amount. This lowest bidder was right in that ballpark. So if we go up to the $1.8 million bidder.
We have to pay the difference?
We have to pay the difference as the county or we ask the EDA for more money, which is not guaranteed.
Is this on Forest Service ground at all? Can the Forest Service participate?
Nope, it's on our road.
On our road.
They tied, EDA, they, they, they tied this grant for the bridge into our 2019 FEMA declaration. So that's what made this possible, made it happen.
So Jeff, explain this to the general public. There's been a lot of misinformation that's been posted on social media, that this is a walking bridge, that we're replacing a walking bridge, that nobody lives behind it. Explain why this bridge needs to be replaced.
So this bridge is a 1925-ish era. It got moved back in the 50s from the Warm Lake area. They cut it in half, moved it to Yellow Pine, and they spanned the East Fork River with it. There's approximately 30 residences on the other side of this bridge, plus the Village of Yellow Pine's drinking water treatment center.
So there's a lot over there.
There's a lot over there, plus it accesses more private mines. It does eventually access Forest Service property way up in there. It's an old bridge. It got load rated to, I can't remember what the numbers are that it's load rated to, but you can't take a loaded dump truck across it anymore. And which made it difficult to redo their water system a couple of years ago. It's not a walking bridge. It is a, it's 16 feet, 16, 18 feet wide. It's a little wooden, it's got a wooden deck on it, wooden, wooden running boards.
Is it getting left in place?
It will be left in place and used as a walking, kind of a historical back there. A lot of the locals wanted it left there, so it will be blocked off for normal traffic. It'll just be a pedestrian only. By leaving it there, it saved us a lot of environmental issues. It was where the piers and everything where it would have been in-water work. Where this new bridge is, it's spanning it and will be very, very little in-water work to install the new one.
So by doing this, if we did not do this bridge, then we're landlacking homeowners back there. And that's going to hold, be a whole other.
It's still, the bridge is still structurally okay. It just, you just can't get the equipment across it.
They wouldn't be able to fix or complete their water project.
Right, and that's where they ended their project last year was from the water treatment center down to the bridge. And their next grant will take them to the, from the bridge into the village.
So that can drive back and forth on the bridge until this new Epstein Bridge is in place and operating?
Yes, everything, there, there will be very, very little closure back there when this construction's going on. Nobody's going to be really stuck anywhere. They have their own, I think they've got a, I don't know if they got an ambulance back there, but they've got volunteer firefighters, EMS people back in there. It, it's a, it's just a very, very old bridge.
Okay.
So with the bridge funds that the state has, is there any opportunity for LTAC to find funding to meet the difference?
I don't know. We'd probably have to ask, you know, get Ken involved, be involved with LTAC a little more on this, but, where it's a, I don't know. That's all I can say is I don't know.
Well, it's a rated bridge. There's funding out there for that, so we should be able to do that.
Right, so when we load rate a bridge, that triggers federal funding.
So how much, uh, when you're talking dollars, the EDA or whatever acronym it is, funds X amount? How much difference do we have between it and the medium bid?
What was that? Seven hundred thousand, Cody? Six hundred fifty, seven hundred?
I, I would, I would somewhere between 700 and 8,000 unless, 700 and 800,000 unless there was some value engineering to bring that number down. And my understanding, the EDA won't allow the project to advance to construction until any balance above their funded amount is, is either paid or committed by Valley County.
Do you know how much they've paid already, Cody, on this that?
I am not sure offhand, Jeff. I think it's somewhere around one, you know, 1.2 million or so, but that includes, you know, effort towards construction, engineering and administration from the county. So I don't have a firm number for you.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we have an option. I think we have to find funding. I mean, it's either got to come out of our budget or we got to find some rated bridge money. I mean, it's, it's got to be replaced.
We're, we've got enough in it already with the engineering and environmental studies and surveys and I, I don't think we can stop either. I mean, we, I guess the next step would be, I don't know, might be a question for Cody, but if we move to the next bidder and say, without awarding it to them, but say, okay, we need to go to the next bidder according to these papers from Oki. Now, the next step would be to go to the EDA, Cody, and ask for more money?
Yeah, we have done that. The EDA has been quite clear there won't be any additional funds.
Oh, okay.
I think we go to LTAC.
We can try LTAC. I don't know how that works with it already being a federally funded project. If they, if they would help, it doesn't hurt to ask.
The state has their bridge funding.
Right.
So that's what I think that's our next step, but I think we have to go ahead and award this. We have to figure out how to fund it.
Since it is our road.
Yeah, it is our road and it's a, you know, it's a bridge that needs to be replaced.
Yep.
All right.
Anything else, Cody?
I don't think so. I don't know that, you know, from a, I will say from a timeline perspective, I don't think EDA will allow the project to advance towards construction without the funding procured. And so if the project is awarded, um, that would have to be procured before the contractor could mobilize to the site.
We got to find this money now.
Well, I think we're going to approve it and then pending, um, either out of the road department's budget or LTAC or, yeah, or PIL. I think we just have to identify the three different funding sources and we just figure out, you know, what we can do and start knocking them off.
Yeah, because we can't, we just, Cody got ahold of the bridge manufacturer this morning and gave him a heads up on what's going on and their, their timeline to get the bridge ordered, get it engineered, get it built. We're already pushing our construction timeline for next summer.
We have to get this done.
Pushes it pretty tight.
Are you ready to make a?
Yep.
Decision?
Yep, yep.
And unfortunately, because of the fact that there is questions on whether the addendum number two had been identified and included in the bid, we are going to throw out the lowest bidder and go with the next. So we do have a notice of bid award that we will read into the record.
And I'll go ahead and read that right now. Get up to the top here. Okay, whereas Valley County solicited bids for the Epstein Bridge EDA Bridge Replacement Project, EDA Grant Number 077907648, and received bids on August 11th, 2025. And whereas Moreno and Nelson Construction Corp. submitted the parent low bid, but did not acknowledge addendum number two on its bid form. And whereas addendum number two was issued on August 6th, 2025, and contained certifications to the contract documents that did materially alter the scope, cost or delivery of the project. And whereas addendum number two provided significant environmental and technical clarifications, including requirements for underbridge containment, turbidity, monitoring, fish salvage, waste disposal and specific riprap specifications. And whereas the parent low bidder's price is approximately 600,000 lower than the other bids, raising concern that the bidder may have omitted the cost or obligations of addendum number two. Whereas the county's instructions to bidders noted that the owner reserves the right to accept or reject any or all proposals and to waive any informalities and irregularities in said proposals. And let me move up a little further here. I wish I had that on a piece of paper.
Right here.
And whereas Code 67-28052AIX authorizes the county to award a competitive bid contract to a bidder other than the other parent low bidder. If it declares its reason or reasons on the record and provides those reasons in writing to all persons who have submitted a competing bid. And whereas the board finds that failing to acknowledge an addendum makes it unclear whether the bidder intended to be bound by its terms and that addendum two had a significant effect on price, quantity, quality and final delivery of the project. And whereas the board finds that the mission of addendum number two acknowledgement by Moreno and Nelson Construction Corp. is a material deviation that has rendered its bid non-responsive. Now therefore, the Board of Valley County Commissioners hereby give notice to all bidders for the Epstein Road EDA Bridge Replacement Project, EDA Grant Number 077907648. One, failure of Moreno and Nelson Corp. in Construction Corp. to acknowledge addendum number two is deemed a material deviation that cannot be waived pursuant to the instructions to bidders must result in the rejection of its bid. Number two, the bid received from Veritas Facility Services and Construction is determined to be responsive and responsible. Number three, the contract for the Epstein Road EDA Bridge Replacement Project is awarded to Veritas Facility Services and Construction as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Brian, find some funding.
It's pronounced Veritas.
Veritas, that's what I figured.
Just, just to correct. Okay.
Veritas. Yeah. Tomato, tomato.
All right, Doug.
Thanks, everybody. If there's no other questions, I will depart.
Thanks, Cody.
Thanks, Cody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our 11:20 conversation is being removed. Unfortunately, we are unable to find a contractor to do the mill foil removal, so therefore that will come off. We could go ahead and sign the facilities request for the replacement of the boilers, since you guys are already in the room and let you go back to work. And the landscape maintenance.
Lost the boiler?
It's just, um.
She totally died?
Review of the, um, the proposals we need to get published is what they are. Really nothing to sign on them till the proposals come in and are opened and reviewed and accepted or.
So what we're doing is approving here is we are approving for you to go out for an RFP for the boiler replacement?
Yeah, these are both the two RFPs is what they are, request for proposals.
And go out for an RFP, are, are they RFQs or they RFPs?
Request for Proposals.
Proposals, okay. And also to go out for an RFP on the landscape maintenance. That's correct?
Landscape maintenance is that for everywhere?
Gary, do you want to talk about what that is?
Yeah, so, can you bring up that PowerPoint? So my thought here is to try to alleviate some of the time and labor on our current facilities maintenance texts, so they can focus more on the inside of the buildings and what we need to be doing mechanically wise and allow, um, local contractors to take care of our landscaping issues, our trees. A lot of trees need to be, uh, pruned out and trimmed and we need to remove a tree out there by the flagpole before it deteriorates our foundation there. So I blocked out all of these different parcels, um, not to say that we would want landscaping for every parcel, but it gives us the ability to say, hey, uh, next week we need this, this and this parcel done and only pay them for the work they do instead of a blanket paycheck for parcels that they may not need to maintain maybe once a month, not every week. That makes sense.
So would that include the annex also?
Yes, yep, that's on page three, right there.
The annex would be in there, fairgrounds, I see that, Lake Fork. Is there anything to do at Lake Fork?
There's, I didn't add Lake Fork in there. Um, we don't do anything really out there. We do ask, um, Steve to go and spray some weeds at different times, but there's not a whole lot of landscape upkeep per se.
And then the annex, I'm gonna call, okay.
Yes, yep, and that's on there too. And I did include the other parcel that we own so that if we need weed remediation, we can get that done.
We own that whole piece out there where the.
We can go out and see what it's going to cost us anyway.
Right, yes, yes, yes. And I made very, very sure evident in that request that we may or may not accept bids.
Okay.
As per. And then on top of that, I asked for an hourly rate for snow removal. Um, I know that the road department is heavily undermanned and, and stressed out and as we are too. So, and it's the same thing per hour, per parcel. If we need help, like maybe we have a big snowfall, they can come out, hit it in the morning and we're able to maintain it the rest of the day.
Oh, thank you.
And I would entertain a motion, first of all, let's break them into two. Entertain a motion to approve an RFP to replace the boiler.
I'll make a motion that we press for RFP to our replacement of boiler over at the jail, too.
Second. It's been moved in. Second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then.
I would move that we sign the Valley County Facilities Request for Landscape Maintenance as presented.
And then we need to amend that. We're not signing it. We're just approving the request for an RFP.
Just approving the, the request, yes.
It's been moved in. Second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Cool.
Doug, you need to attest this for Josh.
So the boiler's cut, that, that's not something we'd put in. It'd be a contractor to put it in.
Oh, yes, it's not, yeah. Is that what we can do?
If we hire the right journeymen, we can put it in. We can buy one, yeah.
Now, we don't have the equipment to do the color piping. Finding pipe machines to thread the gas pipes, so it's, it's a little bit. I could do it if I had the equipment.
Sure.
They don't have, they don't have the color printer or X cutter and stuff, so.
Things have changed so much over the years. I, I watch these guys and these, this big house we're doing, you know, 21,000 square foot house, huge boilers. Nothing's soldered anymore. It's all cramped. Every bit of it. I'm looking at that. Looked beautiful.
Yeah.
Everything's cramped and it's like, what a difference from years ago.
These evolved.
Done a lot of the color piping. It's about years ago. Large industrial plumbing pipe fitting, but it's just mostly piece of equipment. I red, you know, it's hard to be rented. Have the stands to put the pipe on and buy the twenty four pieces of four inch pipe and that and here. Put the time they got every four ways here.
So we have both of you here. Is there a list of things that we're completing before winter? Just winterize the buildings and are we on task to get everything done before that?
Not quite there yet.
When are you leaving us? I can't remember.
October 16th.
October 16th. I just heard yesterday Rita's leaving us on October 16th, too.
No.
Yeah.
Both things and a.
Yeah, well, that's awesome.
Well, that's right. You're just going to.
Good for you guys. I'm jealous.
Enjoyed it. Good for you guys.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to meet you up at the transfer site after lunch.
Yep, it'll be when I hear from Joe. He's working up at the middle school or something. And so I got to find out from him what time he can be back up there.
We have a one o'clock here. That's probably going to be an hour.
Yep.
And then I have a three o'clock and a four o'clock.
So, I mean, we may have pushed this off till tomorrow. Uh, he just, he didn't know how much time he had there. They were trying to complete whatever they were doing, so I'll stay in touch with you guys. All right, thank you.
All right, we will hold for five minutes, take a short break and do the River Fork Ranch agreements at 11:30. And then is Lindsay actually gonna?
She's not going to be, she's going to be online to, Chairman, I do have the agreement to present, uh, but I do believe that she is wanting to participate as well.
Mr. I'm just going to meet us for the time being there for four minutes.
Quick, Miller, Doug's back.
You're back on, Madam Chairman.
All right, welcome back to our Monday morning of our special session on September 11th. Next up is an action item for an agreement with River Fork Ranch, CUP 24-02. Legal attorney, Mr. Odin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. So as you know, we've been, uh, uh, working to attempt to reach a global settlement in this petition for judicial review. Uh, that has failed. Um, but the petitioner and, and the county has come to terms. The interveners here and, and has objected to the, to the settlement. So, uh, we haven't been successful at reaching a global settlement, but this, this agreement reflects the agreement between just the petitioners and Valley County. Um, what it does is dismisses the petition, uh, for judicial review. In return, the county has agreed to, uh, hear the concerns of the, of the petitioners in a, in a regularly, regularly scheduled. agreed to hear the concerns of the, of the petitioners in a regularly scheduled board meeting. The, any requirements that were previously in the global settlement of the interveners were removed from that. So the terms of this just affect the petitioners of Valley County. So as we've discussed, I recommend that the board pursue this and if you have any questions, I'm here and happy to stand for questions.
I think in this situation, I mean, we will listen to the opposing view on this. You have five minutes to do this, but my understanding is this just negates the potential for a lawsuit, or Valley County would have to defend our actions.
The lawsuit goes away pursuant to the settlement agreement. Apparently, the attorney for the petitioners is listening online and is available. If you, if you have a question or, or want to hear from her, that's, I'll leave that up to you. I don't necessarily think that's necessary. I, I, this doesn't necessarily resolve, resolve this. There'll be probably some issues still remain to be resolved with all the parties and, and the case that's pending before the court, but given the fact that we've got a briefing schedule that requires briefs to be filed before you will meet again next time, this is your last opportunity to, to attempt to settle this, so.
Are there any questions of Mr. Oki?
I do not.
Mr. Caldwell?
No, I don't.
Okay. We will take five minutes and hear from your closing.
Madam Chair, I will be brief Amy Holm on behalf of the applicant in this case. We have worked really hard to try to reach a global settlement and we just have not. From the applicant's perspective, the settlement agreement does touch on his due process rights and does actually add things that are not in the development agreement or the conditional use permit. So he is sitting on a land use application that is permitted, and this does add additional terms from his perspective. It, as I said, it modifies those terms. Any agreement that changes the CUP would need the applicant to have the full process to agree to that. So here, you're putting additional restrictions or comments about his future on the line of which he doesn't get to be a party. It is unclear to me what the county really intends to do with this agreement, of which he, the applicant, is not a party. If it is filed in the petition for judicial review, we do intend to contest it and would contest it being incorporated into any kind of judgment. I don't think that this will necessarily make the petition for judicial review go away, but all the attorneys involved can argue that in front of Judge Scott. I also think it could potentially lead to potential exposure in the future for the county related to the applicant's rights. I will stand for any questions, but I just wanted to make sure that the applicant's overall view of the document was used. I would also just make kind of a comment about timing. I understand the idea of we are up against deadlines from the, it would be the petitioners, the neighbors who have an upcoming deadline. I don't think that it is really appropriate though to strong-arm the county into saying either agree with us or else, you know. I get it, we all have deadlines as attorneys and we have to do with those what we have to do, but there is methods to ask for additional time if they needed it. But I see it more of just a, a strong-arm into, you know, we, we won't let this lawsuit go away unless you agree to these additional terms, which does impact the applicant. There is a method for the neighbors to say the lawsuit could go away. So if you wanted me to talk about the specific terms of the settlement agreement, I will, but I don't think it's really necessary, just an overall objection to it, and we will intend to pursue that objection by Judge Scott. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I don't think that this is the proper venue in order to litigate this, so therefore, this is upon the recommendation of our legal counsel that we accept the settlement agreement and the release, and we have had considerable conversation around this, so.
Oh man. So this releases us from our obligation in the middle of this. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson, the, yeah, the terms of settlement agreement is the petition, the petition will be dismissed with prejudice, so the, so from our perspective, the litigation will be, will go away. But as you've heard, there's still issues that are unresolved. There's, there's a process in the appellate rules to, to, to address those, those issues and concerns, and I, I think it's, that's better left to the courtroom and Judge Scott to kind of wrangle with those, with those issues.
So the neighbors would be going directly with the applicant, straight to Judge Scott, and we won't be involved. Is that correct?
Uh, we'll be involved, yes.
We will be involved. Okay. No, I, I understand. I just asked the question.
Commissioner Caldwell, anything that?
No, I don't have any, I don't have any comments.
Do I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release?
I, I'll make a motion that we approve the settlement agreement and.
I have a second.
Second.
Been moved in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Caldwell, do you approve me to sign on your behalf?
Yes, I do.
Unfortunately, this is taking a lot longer than I thought it would. Oh my goodness.
Alright, our next agenda item is ED Pro's update. Let's see if we can get her online sooner. She already has the meeting invited, is that correct?
She has, Madam Chairman. Thank you. Sir Oki, do you want me to attest to that, or is it? Okay. What are we doing, eleven-fifty?
Yeah, I'm gonna try and get Lindsay on early and we'll just complete for the morning.
Oh, you tried to call her?
Maybe we can, uh, that way for lunch, go look at that, for lunch.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can get a little hamburger.
Want to ride the tracks? They're good, they're good jurors.
I'm gonna find out, you're not going to Naco this, in this next year, correct? By now, I'm gonna take a week vacation, middle of the winter. Okay, now it's not until February twenty-first, so again, take that last week of January, first week of February off and take my mother south and go visit some cousins she won't get to see again.
Good, good for you. Where is, um?
Is Harris here online? If, can you hear us? Fantastic.
Yep, you sound, you're coming in clear. Good morning.
Morning. Alright, now, up next, we have an ED Pro's update from Lindsay Harris, our executive director.
Hi, everybody, and I apologize. I thought today was just the, I think I may be slated for a ED Pro update at next week's meeting, if I'm not mistaken, but we do have the Department of Commerce fiscal year twenty-twenty-six contract to be executed, hopefully today. And that's for our, oh, go ahead.
Ms. Harris, I really apologize for interrupting you. The commissioners unfortunately are not meeting next week, so we added you for today, but if you would like to get on the agenda for the twenty-fourth, we could make some adjustments and have you do your presentation on the twenty-fourth, but we just, I, I was, I thought you had a deadline, but I don't, maybe I'm.
We, we do, we do for the, for the contract for Department of Commerce that's due on the, on the fifteenth.
Of October?
No, of this month, of September.
So that's why we put you on for today, for your update. I apologize, you were not made aware of that.
No, that's okay. That's totally fine. I can give everybody a quick off-the-cuff update if you'd like.
Well, let's just do the, let's just do the contract today, Lindsay, and then you can give us a thorough update on the twenty-fourth.
But is that past the deadline?
We have to do the contract today for the grant award.
Okay.
Yes.
That we need to go ahead and complete, and then she can come back on an update.
Fair enough. Sorry to.
No, you're.
That's good.
You're just, you're just, just fine. I know everybody's time is valuable, but we have the, yes, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six grant award with Department of Commerce, and actually this year, ED Pros were given an additional, or I don't know how many of us, but we're awarded an additional five thousand from the state, so that is exciting. We always like more money, not less. So, so that was a gift for this year, and I believe you should have the draft work plan that's required to be submitted as well with the, with the contract award. But, but yeah, it's, it's pretty straightforward, enough, no crazy changes or updates from years prior. Just the state was a little behind on getting the contracts out, and so, so that is why the delay. Normally, we would have take care, taken care of this in the summer, but it is due on Monday now. Any questions?
We have a grant, I'm sorry, Lindsay.
That's okay.
Any, any questions for Lindsay? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the ED Pro Grant Award Contract for thirty-five thousand.
I would move that we approve the ED Pro Award and Contract in the amount of thirty-five thousand.
Have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we'll look forward to an update at our next meeting.
Great. Thank you all so much, and I hope you have a good rest of, rest of the day. Thank you again, and we appreciate the partnership and being our, our applicant and fiscal agent for that. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you, Lindsay.
Bye, everybody.
See ya. Okay, that being the last meeting agenda item from this morning, we will recess for lunch and re-